Citizens Redistricting Commission. This time, I will now take the role of our commissioners. Commissioners, please be prepared to unmute your mics and respond when your name is called. Commissioner Franklin.
President.
Commissioner Holtzman.
Hello, President.
Commissioner Maeda.
President.
Commissioner Obergeun. Commissioner Segarra. Commissioner Soto.
President.
Commissioner Stetcher.
Present.
And Commissioner Venta. Thank you, Commissioners. At this time, I would like to introduce to you Holly Watley, the independent counsel for the Citizens Redistricting Commission. Holly is a stakeholder of Kalanitano, High, and Watley, and serves as the Assistant City Attorney of South Pasadena, Ojai, and Sierra Madre. She heads the firm's litigation department focusing on public law, disputes, including post redevelopment and other municipal finance issues, water issues, matters involving local agency formation commission, LAFCO, land use, the California Public Records Act, SEQA, election and employment law disputes. Holly is also a faculty member of the University of Southern California, where she teaches public policy.
Let me, if I can jump in there, I think that that's probably Gayla's qualifications, the USC part.
Oh, I'm sorry.
That's okay.
I didn't want to give over some expertise to you. I'm so sorry.
That's all right.
Yeah, when I introduce Gayla. Okay, so also, I mean, it's very impressive that in 2013, the Daily Journal recognized Holly as one of the top 20 municipal lawyers in the state of California. And we are so excited to have Holly representing the Citizens Redistricting Commission. Holly, would you like to provide a few remarks?
Sure. Good morning, everyone. I provide service to public agencies throughout the state of California on a variety of issues. One of my concentrations does include election law, which I have a lot of experience in, including redistricting and assisting a number of cities throughout the state, moving from at-large districts to, I mean, pardon me, at-large elections to, for their city councils, to districting-based elections. And so those are my sort of specific qualifications to assist the commission here. And I look forward to helping you complete your work this coming year. Thank you.
Thank you, Holly. Now we'll move on to our executive director. So I'm excited to introduce Gayla Creach-Hartso. She's a PhD, the Executive Director of the Citizens Redistricting Commission. Dr. Hartso has been the president of KH Consulting Group since 1986, and she has extensive expertise in organization change, public policy, strategic planning, service delivery, community needs assessment, and stakeholder buy-in. She has consulted on more than 300 projects throughout the United States and over the past 10 years internationally in Australia, Europe, China, and South Asia. And she is a faculty member of the University of Southern California, teaching public policy. We are looking forward to working with such a dynamic business professional that brings such a wealth of experience and strategic planning to guide the Citizens Redistricting Commission over the next year. Gayla, I'll provide, hand the mic over to you to provide some opening remarks and move today's agenda forward.
Well, and Twila, thank you for the kind words. And in the interest of time, I'm going to go straight into the presentation and the meeting. So I'm going to share my screen. And I'm asking to make sure everybody is able to see the screen. Are we good? I appreciate the thumbs up. Okay, so today is the first meeting of the CRC selection overview process. I'm wanting to thank Twila for calling the meeting to order. On Agenda Item 1, I will give a notice that this meeting is being recorded, and it will be posted on lacounty.gov/compub, along with other types of commission recordings. I will also add the comment, if you want to add any kind of public comment submissions during the course of this entire process, you can use the standard email below, comserve@bos.lacounty.gov. And by January 1st, we are told that there will be a website for CRC that the county will be completing and providing, at which point there will be a submit link there as well, not only for public comment, but also for submitting your names of interest if you want to be on a regular distribution list. You've already met Holly, who's the independent counsel. My name is Gayla Creach-Hartso. I will let the commissioners know I have one of the hardest names in Southern California, so you are welcome to just refer to me as Gayla, which makes it just much easier for everyone. At the start of this, I wanted to make it quite clear that the CRC is not officially constituted. We are in the process of working with the eight randomly selected commissioners to select the other six remaining commissioners. And the goal for that completion is December 31st of this month, at which time the commission membership will be finalized, and we will then become a formal Citizens Redistricting Commission. We need the 14 commissioners. It's requirement by law that we have a quorum of nine members, and we need nine members to vote on any official actions. In January, there will be an oath of office, and the commissioners will all receive training on the Brown Act, election codes, the CRC bylaws, and other important matters, including the establishment of the calendar and all the target dates for the public hearings and outreach during the course of this project. I also just want to say, you know, as part of my opening comments, this is a very historic moment. This is the first time that such an independent redistricting commission has been established. And it will be our commitment to ensure transparency, which is why we're holding this final selection process in an open forum for the public to attend. Integrity, legal counsel will be very important to make sure that we abide by all aspects, and we achieve the objectives in terms of what the commission and the election code requires of this group. I just want to go over a little bit of Zoom etiquette, and I think in the future, we're going to be using some other standard technology. But for today's meeting, I am going to ask everyone to mute themselves. One quick way to unmute when you do need to speak is just hit the spacebar and hold it down until you complete your question. For members of the public, if you would like to enter your name, affiliation, and email, we will make sure to include you on the updates regarding the CRC and future meetings. You will be added to the database. Again, once there is a CRC website, there will be a place there where any other groups you know or individuals could also sign up. I'm going to ask during the course of the formal part of the meeting that you do not use chat for side conversations or raising questions. We will have time when there's public comment, at which time you can type your names into chat, and we will take the public comment in the order that your names are submitted into chat. But first, use the first 15 minutes of this meeting so we can get everybody's emails who want to get distribution of future meeting notices. During the formal part, it looks like most people are abiding by this. We would like the commissioners and independent counsel to leave their video on. I am asking members of the public to turn your videos off. This way, you can focus on the commissioners or the presentations at a given time. And then, when it's time for public comment, obviously, we would love for you to turn your video back on so we can see you and your presentation for your comments. Okay, in terms of the agenda, we are going to start with the commissioners introductions. And then, I'm going to go over the actions needed to take that need to be completed during the month of December to select the remaining six CRC commissioners. As part of that, I'm going to provide you an overview of the applicants and compare that with LA County demographics. One of the key concerns is to make sure that the commission reflects the diversity of Los Angeles County. I then will want you to have a conversation. I will give you some options about how the commissioners may go about reviewing the app, reviewing the applications for you to decide and agree on the best approach you want to take. And we will conclude then with this schedule for completing this task. And with that, let's do commissioners introductions. In the interest of time, because I know there's a problem with Zoom fatigue and virtual meeting fatigue, I'm going to ask commissioners to try to keep your opening comments to about one minute. Twila will be timing it. But what I'd like you to share with us and with the public is what you bring to the CRC efforts. The other comment I want to make is, we will be going through this again, and we can allow more time. We have all 14 commissioners on board. And so with that, I'm going to turn off the screen, and I'm going to ask Twila to just call off the commissioners and have you each introduce yourselves.
Commissioner Jean Franklin, you have one minute.
Hi, good morning, everyone. I'm Commissioner Jean Franklin, and I'm so excited about being a part of this commission. I bring over 25 years of experience as far as community organizing and local hire in particularly, and community advocacy on behalf of the disenfranchised community. Primarily, my focus has been on community education and outreach and local hire, as I indicated that before. But also, it's important, and what I bring to the table, is the sincerity and the passion for making sure that the disenfranchised community, they are involved, they are informed, and then they have access. It's important that without information, you're not able to make sure that your voice is heard. And it's critical that we go to, what I might say, the byways and to the undercurrents and the outskirts of our community and reach those who have normally not had a voice. It's particularly important at this day and time that transparency.
Commissioner Franklin, your time is up.
Thank you.
Commissioner Holtzman, you have one minute.
Oh, greetings, everyone. Can you hear me? Put your thumb up if you can. Yes, thank you. So I've been involved with elections since I was 12 years old. I've been involved in ensuring fair elections since high school, when I ran the high school elections committee. I've been very much interested in the mechanisms of elections. But after college, I went into public health. I worked for dozen years in air pollution health risk assessment, and then moved down to LA to be in UCLA's law school program in public interest law and policy. Graduated from there, did some environmental consulting, and ended up on the hearing board at the Air Quality Management District, using both the law degree and the science. And through all that, when I've been in LA, I've been interested in electoral reform. And have, I found out my grandmother was a suffragist, and I joined the League of Women Voters, and I've helped the League of Women Voters with various things. And I'm pleased to be here to help the county redistrict for the first time independently.
Commissioner Holtzman. Okay, Commissioner Maeda, you have one minute.
Morning, everybody. Dan Maeda. After a career as a litigator focusing on entertainment and media industry litigation for 30-some years, I recently joined the faculty at the UCLA School of Law, where I helped run a program called the Documentary Film Legal Clinic, where we train second and third-year law students to represent filmmakers pro bono. But I'm a political junkie. I'm very interested in issues of voting rights and redistricting nationally. And when I heard about the opportunities to be involved in the Los Angeles process, I jumped at that chance. And I'm very grateful that I was selected in the ping pong ball lottery. And I'm looking forward to working with you all to help make the districts in Los Angeles County fair and complete as possible.
Thank you, Commissioner Maeda. Commissioner Obergeun, you have one minute.
Hi, I'm honored. I'm kind of like a recently retired social science teacher for LAUSD. Was raised in Los Angeles City, Northeast LA. As a child, I was always very confused with all the lines. LAUSD had its own lines, city-county had their own lines. All these lines were so, gosh, they didn't seem to make sense. Little skinny parts connecting other parts. I was, you know. So here I am with an opportunity to have an influence on this, and I'm honored. Thank you. That's it.
Thank you, Commissioner Obergeun. Commissioner Soto, you have one minute.
Morning, everyone. I'm Hyle Soto. I'm excited to be a part of this new endeavor with the commission. My experience, I have 15 years of municipal, local municipal experience, working through city planning. My educational background has been in land use planning. Received my undergraduate degree in urban studies and planning, and my graduate degree in public administration. So I'm excited to apply that knowledge, as well as my experience through SEQA, the flood maps, through FEMA. And more recently, I've been working with the 2020 census. That was the community, the census data is in for the city. So I'm excited to use that experience with the 2020 census, getting civic engagement for our citizens to participate, and going to the next step with the, applying the census data into the next step.
Thank you, Commissioner Soto. Commissioner Ben Stetcher, I'm sorry, you have one minute.
Hello, everyone. I'm Brian Stetcher. I'm recently retired from the RAND Corporation, where I've been a policy analyst for the last 20 years, 30 years, working almost exclusively on education issues. And the motto, if you will, of RAND is "objective analysis for effective policy." And I'm looking forward to being on this commission, because I think we're supposed to do exactly that. The objective in looking at evidence relating to the population of the city and ensure, the county, and ensuring that the way the districts are drawn empowers all of the various constituencies in the county. So I'm excited to be working with you all and over the next 12 months. And I look forward to our next get-togethers.
Thank you, Commissioner Stetcher. Do we have Commissioner Venta on the line? Okay, Gayla, that's all of our commissioners introductions. I'll hand it over to you.
I want to welcome you all. I look forward to working with you and getting to know you all better. I have had, I've gone through your applications that were posted publicly with the registrar recorder, and you are indeed an impressive group. And as we go forward, I know you will identify six additional commissioners that will round out the group, again, to reflect LA County in terms of its diversity and the various issues put forward in terms of this group. Continuing on with the, with the formal part of the presentation, again, I just wanted to welcome you all. So at this point, we move on to Agenda Item Number 2. This is the public comment, and each person will have one minute to make any comments they would like to make at this time. One way we can go about this is, if you want to put into the chat box, if you want to make a public comment, the executive office staff, Emma, Rhonda, and Twila then will handle the public comment portion. For those who have signed on later, you can also put into the chat box your name, your affiliation, and your email if you would like to receive future updates regarding the CRC meetings. For now, you'll be using the commission website for submitting any public comments as this project goes forward, as well as we will be posting all meetings there. Come January, when this group is officially put into place, there will be a CRC website, where there will also be a link for you to submit your names for receiving future updates and for reviewing agendas and minutes of these various meetings.
So Gayla, we have Ms. Jacqueline Dupont Walker, who would like to provide comment. You have one minute, Ms. Walker.
And I would encourage you to turn on your video so all can hear you, public, or see you, as well as hear you.
Thank you. And good morning. First, my thanks to the commissioners for willing the giving of their time, having done it twice with the city. I welcome you to a special group of people who have a star in heaven. I just want to emphasize what you've already said, is that diversity is extremely important, not only from a geographic, from a cultural point of view, from a gender point of view, but so that it does reflect LA County. I would also ask, a strange part of diversity, diversity that reaches into the community of people who don't have the wealth of time to participate in this process. Those people for whom daily living consumes most of their time. And if in the process of looking at that, you could find someone who, because of COVID, now may participate because it does not require the travel. It's extremely important. Thank you for what you do, and I look forward to working in partnership.
Thank you, Ms. Walker, for your comments. Is there any other additional comments?
I see one from Alejandra Ramirez Zarate.
Okay, Ms. Zarate, you have one minute.
Hi, good morning, commissioners. It's a pleasure to meet you, familiar with some of you. My name is Alejandra Ramirez Zarate. I'm a policy and research analyst for National Project California, multiracial civil rights organization. And I'm pleased to be working with nonprofits and community-based organizations in LA County to elevate the needs of low-income communities of color. So today, I would come to this commission meeting to urge the commissioners to please prioritize full transparency and accessibility of all meetings, of all commissioner meetings. And this relates not only to redistricting hearings, but also to all commission business meetings. So as an example, we should be giving members of the public our community that we represent 14-day notice for the meetings. And today's meeting notice was actually issued right around 72 hours before the meeting, which included the weekend, and did not give community groups sufficient notice to join today's meeting. So we like to see these meetings larger groups, representing the demographic and geographic diversity of our great county, and advance notice.
Marime, your time is up. Okay, our next speaker is Kiana. You have one moment, one minute, please.
Hi, good morning, everyone. My name is Kiana Alcimond Fire, and I'm a program manager with California Common Cause, also a proud LA County resident. For those who aren't familiar with our organization, we work on voting rights, redistricting, money, and politics in California and across the country. We work to promote independent redistricting practices in California, including passing landmark legislation and to help recruit residents to serve on their local redistricting commissions, including this one. So it's very exciting to see LA County's commission begin to form. I wanted to congratulate everyone on your selection to LA County's first-ever independent redistricting commission, the nation's largest and most diverse voting jurisdiction, which is home to 10 million people. On the item of Agenda Number 2, I just wanted to share that one of your first tasks is to select the final six commissioners. We really wanted to encourage you to take a look at the composition of the commission now. You know, who's sitting on the commission, what your collective skills and backgrounds are, and looking at.
Thank you. Kiana, your time is up. Our next speaker is Julia Gomez. You have one moment, one minute, I'm sorry.
Good morning, everyone. My name is Julia Gomez. I am a staff attorney at the ACLU of Southern California. And I want, I, along with other groups that I work with, including Kiana at Common Cause, want to emphasize the importance of the commission making independent decisions, independent of the county, including staffing decisions. We understand that the county has already hired an executive director and general counsel, but the fully seated commission is not, has not been brought together yet. So we encourage, once the commission is fully seated, for you all to assess whether these individuals and all future staff you hire have the expertise and qualifications that you believe are necessary to guide your work. Staffing decisions for consultants, such as racially polarized voting and drawing experts, should be made by you, ideally after you've received training on redistricting and the Voting Rights Act, including training again on racially polarized voting and city demographics. The state commission has already.
Julia, your time is up.
Thank you.
Our next speaker is Fatima, I'm sorry, Giovanni H. You have one minute. Your mute, your microphone is muted. Okay, you can start now. We can't hear you. For some reason, we can't hear you. We can come back to you. So we'll move on to Fatima Malik. You have one minute.
Thank you. Good morning, commissioners, and congratulations on being selected to serve on LA County's first Citizens Redistricting Commission. There are numerous organizations represented here, and I am from the League of Women Voters, Los Angeles County. And our focus has always been maximizing transparency and making sure the public is informed of outreach efforts and engaging the community in this historic process. You were put here to make sure that that happens. And I saw, so we'll repeat one of our colleagues, one of our coalition colleagues' comments that your executive director and legal counsel has already been put into place. And while this might be well-intentioned, you know, we want to make sure that you are in the driver's seat. Full transparency and accessibility of CRC meetings is critical. Unfortunately, we only have a minute to speak here, so I'll encourage you to extend that public comment in the future so we can help, you know, work with you together and make sure there are live streams available and give you different advice on how we can make sure the public is involved in this. And thank you for your time, and we look forward to future conversations.
Okay, and we'll go back to Giovanni H. You have one minute. We still can't hear you.
Possibly see if your computer speaker is on.
Okay, so he's going to log off and log in again, so we could take him at item number five.
Twila, there is still a Karen Diaz that would like to speak.
Okay. Can't miss Diaz. You have one minute.
Good morning, commissioners. My name is Karen Diaz. I'm the electoral field manager with the Coalition for Human Immigrant Rights, CHIRLA. We're a statewide organization with national impact, focused on the integration of human rights for all immigrants and all of our communities. And I want to congratulate you, all of you, for being selected to serve in LA County Citizens Redistricting Commission. And I just wanted to share with you that there has been a recent state legislation change for LA County's deadline to adopt the max, max from August 15th to December 15th. And this gives the commission an additional four months to carry out this work, which should be an ample time to think through the training and preparations that are necessary to develop outreach plans in partnership with the community organizations. So I just want to thank you, and I look forward to working together with all of you.
Thank you, Ms. Diaz. Our next speaker is Leonard Gonzalez. You have one minute. Okay, Mr. Gonzalez.
Sorry about that. Technical difficulties on my side. I want to add my congratulations along with everyone else. I know this is going to be an interesting and difficult engagement from the perspective. from the perspective of the League of United Latin American Citizens. We just want to make sure that we have transparency and that you spend a great deal of time working on your selection process for the upcoming commissioners and ensure that the diversity piece is intact and that we can all be proud of the, of the work that you take next to make those selections. So that's all I have at this point. Look forward to working with you. Again, congratulations.
Okay, thank you. We have Daniel John. You have one minute. Please unmute your mic.
Sorry, thanks. Good morning, commissioners. My name is Daniel John. I'm a staff attorney at Asian Americans Advancing Justice, Los Angeles. As everyone said, congratulations on your selection. This is an exciting time. This is, as people have mentioned, the first redistricting commission for Los Angeles County. So it's, it's really, you know, a highlight of the fact that we're bringing the power from, you know, in twi, like established politicians back to the people. And so to that end, I encourage the county, as others have mentioned, to look at what, who is on the commission and sort of reflect what can make this commission, who can we add to make this commission most legitimate to the people that it's here to serve. Thank you so much. I look forward to working with everyone here.
Thank you. Okay, so we're going to go to Giovanni H.
Hi, can you hear me now?
Yes, we can hear you now. You have one minute.
My apologies. Good morning, members of the Los Angeles County Citizens Redistricting Commission. My name is Giovanni Hernandez, and I'm the California Redistricting Program Manager with the Naleo Educational Fund. I want to first start off by congratulating you all on your selection and thanking you all for your willingness to serve. For the selection of the remaining six commissioners, in order to reflect the diversity of the county, we strongly urge you to choose at least three more Latinos for the commission. Latinos currently make up about 65% of the population in Los Angeles County. Optimally, there should be at least one Latino commissioner in each super territorial district. The work of this commission will determine how well our communities are represented in local government for the next decade. Additionally, we ask that this commission do all that it can to maximize public participation during the redistricting process by facilitating phone participation, allow for a live stream option for those who cannot join via Zoom on an advanced notice of meetings, such as the 14-day
Hernandez, your minute is up.
Thank you so much.
Thank you. Do we have any additional public comment? So Gaila, I'm seeing no others interested in providing a comment. Oh, we have David, Commissioner Holtzman has his hand, hand up.
Yes, hello. For the people who got cut off and had more to say, can we provide them with a, an email address or an address to mail written comments, please?
Yes, we can. So additional written comment can be sent to comserve, C-O-M-M-S-E-R-V, at B O S dot L A County dot gov.
Maybe someone could type that in the chat.
I just typed it in the chat for everyone. Commissioner Holtzman.
Okay, Commissioner Stetcher.
Yes, and then we need some provision to make sure that those comments get distributed to the commissioners. Or a procedure by which we know we have to check in to monitor the, the additional materials that are submitted.
So Commissioner Stetcher, there is, you know, basically, this is just being launched now. There is a process. The executive office receives them. We received one on Friday, which I will go over later with the public comment, but those will be made and attached to the various documents going forward. So you all have them in advance or as they, you know, before, you know, as part of the meetings. It looks like there's one more person would like to speak. Twila, Justin Levitt.
Justin Levitt, you have one minute.
Oh, I was just requesting information. I'm sorry. I didn't mean to request a speak.
Okay, thank you.
So shall we proceed with item three? Twila, are there any other comments? Are we ready to go on?
Yes, we just have Kiana asking if there's additional, can she, can she comment on additional agenda items today? There's a item number five that you will be able to comment.
Yes. Okay.
Okay.
Okay, so having completed the public comment, we now move on to agenda item three, which is the heart of this meeting, the overview and discussion of the CRC meeting. As background, in 2016, the California legislation passed Senate Bill 958, which required Los Angeles County to assemble the CRC following the federal census. The redistricting is something that happens every 10 years. This independent body makes this a very different and unique process. The, the importance is to make sure that each district is reasonably equal in population, that it's, the communities are geographically contiguous, the boundaries taken into consideration, topography, geography, cohesiveness, being contiguous, integrity, compactness of the territory, and community of interest of the super territorial districts. The purpose is to ensure that the Board of Supervisors is representative of the county's population overall. And finally, your choices of how you redistrict will shape a community's ability to elect and rep, and have representation of their choice. I started out by emphasizing that the, the group is not formally constituted yet and has been brought together very rapidly. So for example, Holly and I were just brought on board this week. The goal is to have all 14 commissioners selected by December 31st. So indeed, there's a lot of work ahead. I wanted to give you a backdrop in terms of what's happened to date. You should all feel good because you were selected out of some 741 applications that were submitted to the registrar recorder. The registrar recorder reviewed them based on the Senate bill requirements and identified 533 that qualified. They then selected the 60 most qualified names and made those public for a period of 30 days. You all are aware of the lottery, where somebody mentioned the ping pong balls. And at that time, one was chosen from each of the five super territorial districts, and three were randomly selected from the remaining 55. So you will be selecting the six commissioners from the remaining 52 applications. So this is sort of an overview of the meetings. And again, we're trying to get the dates established very quickly. So again, not only the commissioners have an awareness of the dates, but also that the public. This is the first meeting. We will be giving an overview of the applications. You all will need to agree on the approach you want to use to evaluate them. And you will have homework to look at applications between now and the second meeting. The executive office has done a survey of you, and it looks like the best date for the next meeting is this next Thursday, December 17th at 10:00 a.m. There were two of you where you were going to see if you could make adjustments and could join, but we know we can get at least six commissioners to that meeting. At that meeting, you will discuss the applicants that you have reviewed, identify who you see as the best, and the goal would be to select the final six. I would like to hold in reserve because this is such an important component to setting up the commission that you need to entertain the need for potentially a third meeting, where you may need more time. You may narrow down the candidate list to a smaller pool, but you need more time to discuss. You may want to interview some of these candidates, which we can talk about that approach if you were to select that before making the final decision. So we would like to hold in reserve the option for a third meeting, where again, you would hear public comments, you would discuss the best candidates, and then you'd make your list final. The dates aren't ideal because of the holidays, but possible dates would be either to do it those three days before the Christmas holiday or the following week, the, the three days preceding the New Year's Eve holiday. I'm going to come back to these dates after we've gone through all of the items today in terms of what you need to do. You'll have a better understanding of the evaluation method you want to use to assess the candidates, and you'll probably be in a better position to sort of think about dates in terms of the third meeting. But for now, mark your calendars for December 17th at 10:00 a.m. for the next review. Okay, so applicant overview. I want to also make sure you have received the, the link to the California Elections Code section. It was provided us as part of the agenda today. The information in terms of the applicants is all publicly available on the registrar recorder website. I've given you the link there, and any members of the public can also go and review the applicants. So in terms of the criteria, they have to meet the minimum requirements, which the registrar recorder has already done for you. So all 52 meet the minimum required requirements. As you've heard today from the public comments and from my opening comments and by the Senate bill, it should reflect the county's diversity in terms of racial, ethnic, geographic, and gender diversity. And those four skills are the requirements in terms of what they need to be able to demonstrate. They need to have analytical skills that could be applied to this redistricting process and voting rights. They need to have the ability to comprehend and apply the state and federal legislative requirements. They need to be able to be impartial, critical, and they need to be able to appreciate the diverse demographics and geography of Los Angeles. So the other thing I wanted to mention is that you cannot, you cannot by law apply formulas or specific ratios. The other thing is you've already met the requirement of the Senate bill and the election code that you have one commissioner for each of the existing five super territorial districts. So those requirements, that requirement has been met. I've attached to this PowerPoint some tables. Appendix A lists all of the applicants with different kinds of demographic information. And then Appendix B, for your convenience, are some additional sorts that are based on the demographic information by super territorial district. I thought it might make it easier for you as you go forward and start looking at, at the applicants, and you'll understand why as I go through some of the subsequent information. So let's delve into the demographics in Los Angeles County. So this is the map of the existing five super territorial districts. Probably a nice round number for you to keep in mind is, based on the 2019 update of the US Census Bureau, the population is around 10 million. And when people speak of the five districts, they say each one's approximately 2 million people. I'm going to go through a series of tables, and let me just sort of explain how these tables work. This one is showing you the five super territorial districts. It gives you the number of applicants by district, and it gives you the percent of applicants that you have by super territorial district. And you'll see they're all around 20% if we use round numbers. The other thing to keep in mind is there are 14 commissioners and there are five super territorial districts. So what that translates into is that four of the existing super territorial districts will have three CRC commissioners, and one will have two. And that is just the reality in terms of the numbers. So extending this table, if we were to look at the number of supervisors, super territorial districts, and the number of commissioners selected from the random population, and then looked at the target numbers, you have the flexibility to add between 0 to 1 additional commissioner in super territorial district 1, 2, and 5, and between 1 to 2 in the remaining super territorial districts 3 and 4. Does that sort of give you an overview? I was going to ask questions. Go ahead, Commissioner Stetcher.
The way you described this, you seem to be saying we couldn't have four from one of the districts and two from many of the others, but they had to be within one. That didn't seem to me to be an actual requirement. If we felt, if we wanted to balance other kinds of concerns, we could have more than three from a particular district, right?
I will defer to Holly, but by law, you're only required to have one.
That, that's correct. You, you, that baseline requirement has been met. And so, as you say, if you were balancing other issues, you ended up with four from one and only one from another. That, from a pure legal standpoint, that's allowed.
Yeah. And you're going to see, as I proceed through the other demographic factors, there are going to be a number of factors you need to take into consideration. This is just one. Yes, Commissioner Mayeda.
Thank you. I don't quite understand the, this chart, the possible CRC mix addition. I mean, because I'm looking at districts four and five, each of them currently have two. But for the possible CRC mix for four, it's adding one to two, whereas for five, it's adding zero to one. What, what is the final, the last column mean?
Okay, it was just to give you an order of magnitude. In the event, you wanted to be able to say, we will have four that will each have, will meet the requirement. Like if you take 15, if you take 14 and divide it by five, my earlier comment was not all could have three commissioners. So I'm just giving you an order of magnitude if you were to try to equally distribute them. But to Commissioner Stetcher's point, you may choose not to do that.
But I guess what I don't understand is why would the column on the right side be different for each district that has two currently in them?
So to answer that, if you look at the selection of the eight randomly, some of the districts already have two, and two of them only have one. So all I did was to say if they were each to have three, or they're each to have, how many more you could add.
But that doesn't, I'm sorry. I'm sorry to belabor this point, but
No, I think, right. I think the numbers are off now when I look at it.
Okay.
So let me correct that for you right now. Let's take, let's take this column completely off. Whoops. We had changed this formatting. I understand your point. I, the original. Yeah. So let's just take that off. So it's up for you to figure out what the mix is. Does that work for everyone? Okay. The next criteria is the political party preference, and it should be as proportionate as possible. And the election law basically says the political party preferences of the CRC commissioners are not required to be exactly the same as a proportion of political party preferences among the registered voters. That said, this table is showing you first the applicants, and you'll see the percent of the applicants by party, and in red, the percent that the registrar recorder gave. So of the applicants, you have about 56% who are Democrat. And according to the LA County Registrar Recorder, 56% of their voter, registered voters are Democrat. For no party preference, 25% of the applicants, 26% is what's reflected in the current demographics. Republican, around 17%, LA County Registrar, 18%. So there's a pretty good alignment there in terms of your applicant pool. I also did some quick analysis in terms of the voter registration pool itself. There are 5.8 million that are in the current registration poll, and based on the population, that's around 73% of LA County age 18 and older. Okay. So on the next slide, I've added the columns, and again, we can adjust this. But again, it was looking at the makeup of the current randomly selected CRC. And then if it was reflecting LA County, you would have basically eight Democrat. You have four now. You could add four more. No party preference, you have four now randomly selected. I'm sorry, four would reflect the county randomly selected. You already have three. You could add one more. Republican, you have, you could have two. You have one now. You could add one more. So again, it's just giving you some parameters to think about where you might want to add. So any questions on party preference? Okay, the next demographic has to do with gender. In your applicant pool, 50%, 50% were female, 50% were male. In the US Census data, there's a little bit higher percentage of women, 51%. In the U.S. Census data, there's a little bit higher percentage of women, 51% female, 49% male. If your mix of the 14 were to reflect the county, you would have seven female, seven male randomly selected. You currently have two female, six male. So in terms of possible mix, you may want to consider adding more women, five women and one male. Again, just a demographic other factor for you to consider. So any questions on gender? Okay. So the next one we look at is the by age. And again, on the left, you have the number of applicants and a percent distribution. In red, the U.S. Census data, around 59% of L.A. County is age 18 to 64. And between about 14% are age 65 or older. So when we looked at the randomly selected, first, if we looked at what the mix might be for the county, you would probably have 12 who would be under the age with 64 or younger, and you'd have two who would be 65 or older. You currently have two who are 70 or older. So you may want to focus on adding six who are in the age range of 18 to 65, 64, 69. So any questions on the age distribution? Okay, I see. It's nodding. Okay, now let's look at race and ethnicity. The large pie chart, again, is the U.S. Census data 2019, and it gives the mix based on ethnicity and race in Los Angeles County. And the way the U.S. Census handles white alone is they provide a separate split. You'll see that's 71%. They provide a separate split. And so approximately of that category, 35% are white alone, not Hispanic or Latino, and 65% are Hispanic or Latino. So applying those metrics, if we look at, in the blue table, I give you the mix in terms of L.A. County, what the mix of the 14 might be to reflect L.A. County, and then how, what the current racial mix is of our randomly selected, and what the possible mix could be of the additional six. And then I split apart the four that would be Latino or white, and that would really translate into adding three to four additional commissioners who are Hispanic or Latino, and zero to one who are white, if you wanted to reflect based on racial and ethnicity. So any questions on that one?
Um, I don't particularly have a question, but I do have, and I understand that it's built based upon the census 2019 census. Blacks consist of 9%. However, looking at the makeup of the six, there is no determinant indication as far as recommendation, as far as race, Hispanic and Latino, three, yes, white, white alone, three. But there's nothing as far as a recommendation of an African American or, or, or an American Indian. So right now, there is only one black representing this citizen redistricting. And looking at transparency, looking at diversity and the makeup of, of the citizen redistricting, I think we really need to look at adding at least two, minimum of one, but at least two more African American individuals on this, on this citizen redistricting. That's the conversation, but I do understand how the makeup is made up out of the census. But right now, it really does not reflect our diversity as far as the citizen redistricting.
And that is up to the commission to decide. So absolutely, I'm just giving you what the ratios might be if you did straight numbers. You're only working with 14, so you can adjust these as you see appropriate to have the feeling that you have a good cross-section of the county. So these are just guidelines for you to consider. Okay, any other comments? Questions?
Hello.
Well, Priscilla, Commissioner Openala Segura, welcome.
Thank you so much. My apologies for joining at this time. The only time that I could join. I just wanted to say hello to everyone on the call, and I'm looking forward to working with everyone.
Okay, so now let's talk about how you might tackle looking at the applications. And again, I'm just providing some ideas and suggestions to generate some thinking on your part. One suggestion is before the next meeting, which is Thursday, is that you make a commitment to at least have every application, the 52 remaining ones reviewed by at least two commissioners. You may decide you want to review all of them. But again, I'd like to at least suggest that we make a commitment that every application is looked at by at least two of you. That would mean between now and Thursday, you would need to look at 13 applications. I could put them together in some combination for setting out to you all. You can go into the registrar recorder and you can look at the applications. I also can create, if it would be helpful, an online survey based on how you want to evaluate them that the commissioners could complete. So we could then have some kind of a tabulated results and could have some kind of a scoring system. So it might be easier to identify the top candidates across the commission. At the second and the third meetings, again, I mentioned earlier, receive public comment, discuss your assessments, shorten the list. Maybe at the second meeting, you'll be able to come to the final six. If not, before the third meeting, you may want to form some ad hoc work groups to interview candidates or to look at the shorter, you know, assign the applications to different people in the group to review. But we absolutely have to have the final six by December 31st. Any questions on that? Okay.
Um, yeah. Not necessarily question, but for clarity. Are you asking for our recommendation as far as whether you would, you know, leaving it up to you, Gaila, to put together a random of 13 applicants for each commissioner? And then we review them prior to the next meeting. At the same time as we review the 13, for example, I'll review my 13, and then I would evaluate my 13, giving them a score. And then upon our next meeting, you will have my recommendation, my, my evaluation. I would also, that's what I would propose.
Okay.
Myself. Also, I would propose as well to do some sort of interview, particularly as it relates to diversity and impartiality. I think those two questions particularly would be relevant of making final decisions of my 13, for example. That's it.
Okay. Well, and it will be up to you all to decide if you want them randomly selected. I'm going to give you some other options to consider as well. Okay, do any other commissioners want to weigh in on this before I go on to some methodology options? Go ahead. We have two commissioners, Commissioner Stetcher, I saw your hand first, and Commissioner Holtzman.
Just quickly, there are about 50 applications left in the pool, or it's a smaller number, somewhere between 40 and 50?
52.
Okay, 52. Thank you.
Commissioner Holtzman?
Yes, I've worked in state service, and I've been in a situation where my office has not met statutory deadlines, but there's been no consequence for that. I'm wondering what would happen if we did go a little past December 31st. I don't see any hammer on us, really. And I'm aware that the census data might be delayed this year. So I think, I'm just thinking that it might behoove us to proceed more slowly and carefully than to rush to try and meet an arbitrary deadline that has, if there's no consequence for missing it. So what, what do you think, Gaila?
So I defer to independent legal counsel on that one.
Sure, the statutory deadline for constituting commission, as you know, is December 31st. In terms of what would happen if the commission did not meet that deadline, as, as a pure legal risk, we would be in violation of the statute. As a practical legal risk, someone would essentially need to file a lawsuit to compel the commission to meet the deadline. That itself would take a while. So I, I, I'm not, you know, we're, we would be at risk for a lawsuit as a practical matter. I think if the commission missed the deadline by a little bit, we wouldn't have too much of an issue. If however, we were to wait until the, the 2020 census data came in to constitute the commission as distinct from waiting for that data to draw the maps, that I think would be an issue. And it's something I would recommend we avoid. So, you know, missing the deadline by a week, I don't think is much of a legal issue. The longer we go, the more problems we're going to have.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Okay, so let me just sort of share straw models, some options that you all might want to consider in terms of how you might go about looking at the candidates. San Diego did a ranking approach where each commissioner ranks the candidates from high to low. And I can, you know, again, design an online survey, and I can provide a summary of those rankings to share with you all at the next meeting. Option two is what I would call a criterion-based evaluation. It's something similar to what the registrar recorder did. You would evaluate based on different criteria, the candidate on a scale of one to five. Here is an example of how it might be designed. I just put across the top the skills based on the Senate bill and the applicants you're evaluating. You would then assign a score of one, which would be low, all the way up to five, which would be high. And we would tabulate it, and we would draw a line in terms of some score, and then look at the candidates we have. You then may want to make some adjustments based on demographic, race, ethnicity, and other factors to balance it out. But this would be one approach. You could also add some additional skills that you'd want to include in terms of consideration. These are the ones that are formally available. Option three is what I call a segmentation approach to reflect L.A. County's diversity. So we could actually identify areas where you feel you are underrepresented in terms of diversity. And we could divide the packets instead of randomly to look at. We could really make sure that each commissioner might have a particular group that they really want to focus on and concentrate on. We could divide you, for example, into two to three ad hoc groups, and you could look at a little larger bundle collectively before the next meeting. Okay, so when I asked you individually, I was asking you to make a commitment to look at at least 13. This would require you to look at more, and you could have an ad hoc conversation. Commissioner Holtzman, I see your hand is up. Do you have a question?
Yeah, sorry, that was from before. But I, I do have something to go back to when you're done with your, with your presentation.
Oh, no, that's fine. Again, you have the ability to do interviews, whether or not you feel you could do interviews between now and the second meeting. You would have, you have, obviously, you can do that if you want. Or you could decide based on how much closure there is at the second meeting, whether or not you want to do interviews and do them before the third meeting. Or you can do some combination, or there's some other options. I see Commissioner Stetcher's hand.
How much of this can be done privately and how much has to be in an open meeting? So if we are two or three people wanting to discuss a collection of 13 applicants, can we do that alone, or do we have to do that in a public meeting?
So I will defer the independent legal counsel on that one.
Sure, if you have, technically, since you're not officially constituted yet, you are eight. The commission requires, even when we're fully constituted, requires a quorum of nine. However, just, just for transparency purposes, we are conducting this activity under the Brown Act and applying that rule to the eight that are here just voluntarily. If we have smaller ad hoc groups, you can do that outside of a public meeting. However, the idea is that you, or the requirement, rather, is that you would then bring your recommendation or your analysis to the full group at a publicly noticed meeting for full public vetting. So you can, you can develop some recommendations in groups of four or less outside of the public meeting. But you don't have to do that, that is an option. But no decisions would be made outside the public meeting. It would be coming back to the full meeting with an explanation, with full vetting, public comment, et cetera.
So
Thank you.
I, I think we should just open it up to the general discussion. I did mean to mention that if you wanted to add some other criteria, if you were to do an assessment approach, you may want to add things like working collaboratively, public and community engagement experience, GIS mapping, or whatever else you want to consider. But these were just a starting point for your discussion of how you might want to tackle it. And I might suggest you focus on what you could realistically accomplish between today and Thursday, since that's when we're going to be looking at the first pass. Commissioner Mayeda?
Thank you. So my reaction to this, these options, first of all, it's great to have options to, to look at so we can really try to formalize our thinking. My reaction to this is the ranking for everybody, I think that's great. I can't imagine us doing that all between now and Thursday. So probably grouping in some way is going to be required. Number two, I'd be very nervous about that one because even though there, we can add a column or something for additional diversity considerations, I, I think that's going to be lost, and I think that's one of the key criteria we need to be looking at. Three, I like that, that possibility. I want to see how that might, might play out. Interviews, again, I think would be great, but I can't imagine it's, it would be productive between now and Thursday. But I want to throw out another possible consideration, which is that with regards to representation in the districts, I realize we currently have met the minimum criteria of at least one per district. But right now, we have three districts that have two and two districts that have one based on the random selections. So it occurs to me that we might consider trying to fill at least one more for the two districts that only have one commissioner. And that selection should be done cognizant of the needs to diversify, especially gender, but also race and other, other criteria. And then look to do four more of the six. Now, in other words, segmented two are going to be one for each of the two districts that only have one right now. And then the other four are going to be looked at, you know, with other criteria. And those could be from any, any district. Just as a possible suggestion.
Other commissioners' thoughts?
Yes, I agree with Commissioner Mayeda on his point as far as how we can move forward. I think filling the other two districts that only have one would be something that we want to look at first. So I'm in agreement.
Commissioner Stetcher?
I was going to talk about workload, and it might be useful. I was going to talk about workload and it might be useful if we shared how much time we could, we have. I, for one, would be able to read more than just 13 applicants. I think I could read half of the applicant pool and rate them or rank them or segment them however we decide to do this. But I'm not sure how much time other people have. And so we should try to break the task down to make sure it's manageable so that we can accomplish it before Thursday. We really have to do it by Wednesday so that our results can be combined and tabulated and brought back to us.
Let me just also add that you can do combination. So the ranking would not necessarily have to be of all 52. You could do it for the subgroup you're looking at as well. So we can do a combination. Other commissioner comments? Thoughts?
One other thought, I'll, as long as you're letting me dominate for a while. I believe you said you had some breakdowns by population group and of the remaining 52. And it might be interesting if we looked at those quickly now to get a sense of this before we made a decision about how to take the next step.
Okay, so let me show you what's in the appendix. Appendix A just takes the registrar recorder table that was publicly available. And I provide the eight of you that were chose randomly. And then the outstanding candidates, which are listed alphabetically by first name, which is how they also appear on the registrar recorder site. Okay, then appendix B, I did some additional sorts, again, using the same information. The one in purple is the profile of the final 60 candidates sorted by supervisory district by race, ethnicity, and party. So this is where you could quickly see, we have two commissioners from supervisory district one. It gives you the ethnicity, it gives you gender, age, and party. Okay, and that does it for all five. In this navy blue, it's sorted by supervisory district by gender, by political party. And golden amber color, it is sorted by supervisory district by age. Because again, I did not know what factors you all might want to look at. And then the last one is sorted by race, ethnicity, by gender. Because that obviously has been a big conversation we're having. Okay, does that help? And all of that's in the packet and it's available to the public. But again, this would be useful if you decided to go with some kind of a segmentation approach, which could then have the, the criterion-based or could have a ranking. And I'm going to go back to the slide on the options if that's okay with everyone.
Hello?
Yes.
Did I miss it or do you have a breakdown by political party?
Yeah, it's one of the sorts. Hold on. One second here while I make it big. So if you look here, actually, well, parties in each one. I thought I had, you have party in the first one, but I can give you one by party. This one here has the breakdown, if you look at supervisory district first, by race, ethnicity, by party. So you would have to look at this column to see the Democrats. But if you just want to sort by party, that would be very easy to provide you.
I'm just saying, yeah. The only statutory requirement that we have left to meet is proportionality by party registration. There's nothing left that we have to do by supervisory district. So always having that as your first ranking criteria, I think, could skew the approach that we're supposed to take. We should, we should always be sorting now by party as the first ranking criteria and then looking at other things.
We can do any sort you want to just, I will provide a sort by party. Would you like it by party, by race, by gender?
Just by, just by party to start.
Okay, I can provide you with that.
Thank you.
Commissioner Soto.
Yes, so I think the party, on slide 21, I believe that one covers the party breakdown based on the applicant count.
Oh, I'm sorry.
I think.
21 of the tables?
On the PowerPoint presentation.
Okay, let's go back to that. Are you talking about, this is slide 21.
Oh.
This statement here about party?
It was slide 21 on your PowerPoint.
On the part.
Oh, you know what, this has been an updated one, I'm sorry.
Okay, yeah, this like downloaded the one that was on the agenda, so maybe it's a little.
And it was changed, that's fine. Is it this, is this one? Okay.
And there was also, I mean, I want the names, but there was also a slide, I think it's still labeled 21 at the bottom. If you could just go back four and see what it says. Go forward one then. What do we got? No, you did have.
And you tell me when to stop.
You did have it on the screen earlier, one more. There we go, that's the one, it's labeled 26 now. Can I take a moment to speak about this or should I wait?
Go.
Okay, so, um, I did a similar analysis here because if you look, I'm, I'm actually, it would be easiest if I could share my screen. Would you let me share my screen?
I'd be happy to.
Okay, thank you. All right, so I will first share this. Can you all see my Word document there?
We need another second. It has not opened up yet.
Okay, yeah, I'm having a lag on my video, so.
Now we can see.
Okay. So this is election code section 21532. And if you go down to C, you see that the political party preferences of the commission members shall be as proportional as possible to the total number of voters who are registered with each political party in the county. It goes on to say, it doesn't have to be exactly the same, but it does say as proportional as, as possible. So now I'm going to stop my share for a second and then load up a spreadsheet I did. And here's my spreadsheet. Let me know when you can see this.
We can see it.
Okay, so the numbers here in line 11 are the, are from the latest report of registration on the county registrar's website. It's from October. We would need to update it for the, for November, for the time of the election. I'm sure there was a lot more registration at the polls. But it shows the total number of registered voters, how many Democrats, Republicans, and then the sum of the rest of the columns, which is non-Republican or Democrat. So if you take the total number of registered voters divided by 14, you get 415,000 something. And in the ideal proportional situation, that would mean that we'd have 7.34 of us be Democrats, 2.4 of us be Republicans, and 4.26 of us be no party preference decline to state or what have you. So we currently have down here on line 16, we currently have four, one, and three. But the, to get 14, the closest to this would be giving seven Democrats, three Republican seats, and four non-Republican or Democrat seats. Because this, the, the fraction here, the .40 is higher than the .34 or 426. So without considering the fraction, it would be 13. So we have one extra seat to allocate. So that's why I think the, the one extra seat should go to a Republican and that we should end up with seven Democrats, three Republicans, and four non-RD, non-RRD, meaning that we should appoint additional three Democrats, two Republicans, and one non-RD, or whatever you want to call it. So that's my analysis, I'll stop the screen share there. I didn't want to shortchange any other, any political party there. So I think that's a starting point.
Talking about ranges and how you round up or down, that's great. It's up to the commission. And, you know, one thing you may want to consider, however, whatever approach you use and you do a scoring system or ranking system and you come up with your slate of best candidates and it should be more than six. You then do need to look at factors such as party affiliation, race, gender, and other things for making your final determination. And I think that will help you to narrow the list.
But because of the law, what I'm suggesting we do is we rank separately in the Democratic column, rank separately in the Republican column, and rank separately in the other column with an eye to appointing three, two, and one more of each. Because that's the only thing we have to do in the law. Everything else, all those other criteria are discretionary.
Okay. Commissioner Satcher. You're muted.
Yeah, I, I was working on it. I, that's a very interesting analysis and I don't want to dig too deeply. But at this point, I'm not willing to commit to a target for rounding at the hundredths of a percentage point level. I think it's very important that we balance on gender and on race, ethnicity. And in the end, we're not going to be able to match all of our targets perfectly. So I'm not willing to commit at this point that there should be three Republicans and that that's more important than there being an appropriate number of people representing Latinos or representing women. We have to see as we go through the applicants what possibilities there are.
Perhaps I could propose, pose the question to Counsel Watley. Because I think the, having, you know, one criteria in the law, if we, if we fail to respect that, would open us up to lawsuits or some such. What do you think, counselor?
On this one, party preference is one of the criteria where the law does direct us to try as closely as possible to match the county. But it does also in that same section state that no specific ratio or number needs to be required. So again, you know, we're talking about on the edges of a difference between two versus three for one particular party preference. I don't believe the, the commission's going to be vulnerable for its makeup for having two Republicans versus three Republicans. On the other hand, if they had, again, just by way of illustration, if they had 12 Democrats and two Republicans and no non-party preference, that's where I, I think we would get into trouble. So I, I do believe that the difference between two and three is not going to be a legal risk given the other conditions and also given the specific language in the statute that no specific ratio or is required, as long as we're matching as closely as possible. I mean, and they also recognize, of course, you can't, you can't have a fractional member.
I notice Commissioner Opelalasagura, your hand went up. And again, I want to welcome you to the meeting. We knew you were going to be joining late and it would be very kind. The other commissioners did have an opportunity to introduce themselves. They spent about one minute giving a brief background of what they had to offer. So I think you should be afforded that one minute. This is probably a good time to do it and then you can ask your question.
Thank you so much. It's nice to meet everyone virtually. My background is in communications. I'm currently an associate state director in communications for AARP. And prior to that, I worked in the city of Norwalk as the communications manager. So my experience has been in local government, specifically leading communication and outreach efforts. For the city of Norwalk, I led the 2020 census campaign. So this is a great transition, going from working on a census campaign to actually working on redistricting.
And you had a question?
My question was actually if we could refer to general counsel about the question for political parties, but it was answered. Thank you.
Okay. Commissioner Maeda.
Thank you. I want to thank Commissioner Holtzman for, as a lawyer, I definitely want to make sure we're following the law. So it's a good point that you raise about the political party. But I also agree with Commissioner Statler that we don't, I don't think we want to be tied that specifically, especially when the fractions are, are, you know, very, very close. I, I do think, you know, we definitely need to take that and keep that in mind, the party preference, before we make the final selections. But I don't know that I want to sort that way, at least on the first cut. But I do want to ask, you know, I, I made a suggestion about first looking at the districts. But if we've made the minimum on that, do people generally feel fine with the possibility that, you know, some districts will just have one representative, another one might have four? Or do the, is there a value to trying to, you know, balance to some extent, at least with a minimum of two for each district, by taking, you know, while taking into consideration the demographic factors? Is that worthwhile doing or do we just, you know, not really worry about that and just pick the best of the candidates? And then if there's a tiebreaker, to look to try to diversify districts?
Commissioner Holtzman's hand. And then Commissioner Franklin.
Okay, I, I think that because we're now an independent commission, we shouldn't pay too much attention to the existing district lines because we're being asked to start from scratch. So I wouldn't worry too much about choosing from existing districts because we're supposed to be replacing those existing districts. Unless you want to just, well, we can talk later about whether or not you really want to be, you keep the changes to each district small, but that's another question. But in general, I don't think districts, choosing from districts is that important anymore now that we've made the minimum.
You just went. Commissioner Franklin.
Yes, I don't agree. I think that we, as far as certain districts, I'm particularly looking at District Two. I believe that we need to be making sure as close as possible that there is starting out with equal distribution as much as possible. So that's my thought.
Commissioner Opelalasagura.
What would be the justification or reasoning for trying to obtain, ensure that the representatives from each district are equitable? What is the reasoning? I'm curious.
Well, I mean, if I, if it's directed to me, I, I thought that that would be one way to try to, you know, certainly justify the selections that we make, that we try to have it geographically dispersed within the county. It's a big, big county and so forth. I, I do take Commissioner Holtzman's suggestion that we shouldn't really, you know, be guided so much by that because we are going to be drawing new districts. That, I, that, that has some appeal to me. As far as Commissioner Franklin's suggestion, the, I'm not sure what she was saying with regards to District Two. District Two now has two. So if we are going to focus on districts, then we wouldn't necessarily add someone to District Two, at least on the first cut. But, you know, perhaps we don't, we really don't have to worry about it.
Thank you.
Commissioner, Commissioner Obregón, did you want to make a comment?
Yes, am I being heard?
Yes.
Good. I guess the comment of that we're going to create completely new districts without even endeavoring to look at it is a little short-sighted. The five districts are there and we can maybe tweak them to make them better and to make them more balanced and representative of the demographics is really our intent, not just to throw away the old, just a thought. Thank you.
Other commissioner thoughts? Commissioner Maeda.
Yeah, going off that, so my understanding, and people have said it before, this is the first time that citizens will be drawing the districts. So who drew the districts? How are the districts? So who drew the districts? How were the districts drawn the last time?
I can walk through on a very high level overview. And if the commission would like once fully constituted, I could arrange for the person who is in charge of the coordination of that in 2011 to meet with you in January or February, based on what agendas you put together. But in 2011, the, I think it was called the Border Redistricting Commission or Committee, BRC. And they, the members were appointed by the Board of Supervisors. And most of the adjustments, from my understanding, were sort of around the edges and the borders, that if you look at the five supervisory districts 10 years ago and 20 years ago, they have not changed dramatically. But we can have that later confirmed. You can also go online and the 2011 BRC website is still in place. And you can look at the various minutes and information they have posted there as well. But that said, you all have a lot more, you know, you're independent. You need to approach this in how you see is best. And the goal is to avoid any kind of lack of objectivity that has occurred in the past. Would it help? I put together a little poll or, I mean, I'm trying, I think I'm trying to respect everyone's time and I don't want to rush this process, but have we reached any kind of agreement if you would prefer a ranking methodology versus some kind of an assessment scale of a rating scale of one to five? I'm trying to look at points of agreement. So thoughts just on that? And then we can look about how we may want to tackle, but the actual evaluation, yes, Commissioner?
I think.
Opelalasagora's hand was up first.
A quick question. If we look into assessments, would that require the ad hocks? I briefly heard it being mentioned. So I just wanted more information on that.
Yeah, I think we'll take this step by step. Let's agree first on how you want to rate them. Then we'll agree if you want to do them individually, where you look at, let's say, 13, or if you want to do them in small ad hoc groups. But let's first ask the question about what you feel most comfortable in terms of rating and evaluation. If there's. Yes, Commissioner Stetcher.
I think the only thing that's practical, if we're going to meet again on Thursday, is that we rate, rate them individually and assemble those ratings and then look at for the highest rated women among the groups as a second step. But I can't imagine how we could get together in small groups to have a discussion and get that evidence back to you and summarized by Thursday, or by Wednesday. So I don't love it, but I think practically speaking, the best thing would be for each of us, for you to assign each of us a chunk to make sure everyone is looked at by two or three members of the committee. We rate them on a one to five scale or something. Compile those ratings and then we can discuss them Thursday, but within categories. By party, by gender, by supervisory district, by race ethnicity.
I mean, other thoughts? I'm looking for, at some point, we can, we can do, I see a thumbs up. Do I have a motion as a first step? Or do you want more discussion on this item? Commissioner Stetcher, are you willing to make it as a motion?
Certainly. I was just waiting to hear from other people who hadn't spoken, but I move that we assign ourselves, you assign us each a random subset of people to rate, that we rate them on a one to five scale, like the one that you proposed. And we do that by Wednesday at noon and submit our ratings and you have, so that someone has time to compile them and present them back to us for our Thursday meeting.
Is there a second?
I second.
Okay, I'm going to do a very informal, I'm going to launch a simple poll for the eight commissioners. Yes, no abstain?
Could you repeat that, please?
Do you agree that one approach, the best, the motion is the assigned approach should be a rating scale of one to five? I will assign you a group which will decide next or as part of this, and you'd complete the evaluation by noon on Wednesday. Okay, I have everybody. I have five yeses and two abstain. So you're not an officially constituted group, but let's use this as a starting point for how we might proceed. Yes, Commissioner?
And just briefly make a comment. I abstain only because I tend to agree with Commissioner Stetcher's view that this is probably the only way we can try to advance something before Thursday, since it's so fast. The only concern I would have is I would want to, my own caveat would be, this is a ranking based on certain criteria that does not include apparently race, gender, political party, et cetera. And I'd be concerned if people thought, okay, you've got this list, this is the most meritorious persons and you're rejecting them because they don't meet these criteria. Whereas in fact, those are to me as fundamental of the characteristics as any other specific criteria. And so I'd want to caution that we don't lose sight of that.
So Commissioner Maeda, if I may, one option would be to have these bundled with the intent of doing, I mean, we can bundle them based on the segmentation approach, or we can bundle them randomly. Just for a consideration.
I'm sorry, can you explain what, what the segmentation approach would, would mean?
The segmentation approach would be to Commissioner Holtzman's point. Here are a list of all the Republican, party affiliations, Democrat, whatever. Here's a list of all females, males, you know, the different categories. And people could have bundles where they really just want to focus on by race. Just, I mean, that's an option, or they're random. You know, you get a random list and you pick and then we come back and we look at who, what pool have ranked, let's say in the top 15 or 20, and then we apply the demographic lens to it.
If I may?
Yes, Commissioner Obregon.
Yes, what I'm trying to understand is how I'm going to function in this. Will I be looking at the 52 applicants and then giving it a one to five? Will you break it up into packets where I'll look at 26? And each one of us, maybe 13 each? I don't know. There's, there's multiple ways that we could do the ranking. I'm just, my concern is, are you going to send me my, let's say we decide on, I'll look at 13. And you're going to send me the 13 applicants and then I can rate them and then send you back the message on the rankings of the 13? I'm just trying to understand the nuts and bolts.
So, so right now, Commissioner Obregon, I think that's what we're trying to come to grips with. One suggestion was that they be randomly assigned to you, that you would have 13. You may decide that you can look at more. All I said, it would have to be a minimum of 13 if each application would be reviewed by two commissioners. So, I mean, what do you feel is realistic to do for this first pass?
I, you know, I, am I going to be looking at a one-page application where I can read? Because I'm trying to imagine what I'm going to do. I'm going to be reading either 52 or 13 pages of people and then selecting what I think according to the, you know, all those little standards, you know, race, women, female, things like that. Because I almost feel I want to see all 52 real fast and decide the best eight, in my opinion. I don't know how laborious that's going to be.
So I will tell you how about the applications. It's exactly what you filled out. So you will see an essay about how a person possesses the experience demonstrating the analytical skills. There's an essay on the ability to apply state and federal legal requirements. There's an essay, there's an essay on impartiality. And there's an essay on understanding diverse demographics. So there are four essays for each of the 52 applicants linked to the criteria that the election requirement states. So it's basically a half page to a full page for essays per applicant.
With that in mind, I would think maybe 13 is a better number.
So do we have a motion or not?
I'll put that as a motion. Let's do 13 per person or two groups, I guess, right?
So we would make a motion that each commissioner would commit to review 13 of the applications to be randomly assigned to each of the commissioners. Is that correct, Commissioner Obregon? Have I captured?
Yes, that gives me a number, that gives me something to work with and that we can all go from there, I think.
Okay, is there a second?
I second.
Okay, I'm going to do the same thing with the poll.
Can we just discuss for just a second?
Sure.
Okay. I have a helicopter going by here in Burbank. My position on this, and perhaps it will persuade others, comes partly from the fact that I am not going to be available for a full meeting on Thursday. I, you know, you know, I'm not available on Thursday. And also my, my general thought is that it would be better if we all took the time to review all of the applications. So that, that, that's what I'm going to say. I would be fine with canceling the Thursday meeting to give us that time. Just saying, that's probably why I'll be voting no on this motion.
Commissioner Opelalasagora.
Sorry if I missed this earlier. On Thursday, what time is the meeting?
10:00 AM.
10:00. Is that a two-hour or one-hour meeting?
It's always been my desire to try to keep these meetings to two hours. Obviously today's, we're going to probably be a little longer. Again, this is a very important point, so it could easily take more than two hours. Would an evening time be a better time? We do not necessarily have to meet at 10:00 AM. That was just picked. Is the day okay, but the time's not good? I see, Commissioner Obregon, were you asking a question or were you?
Maybe both, because I was trying to speak on what Mr. Holtzman said.
Okay.
And I originally, that was my intent. I think we should, each one of us, look at all 52 and rank them. And, but then I said, gee, by Thursday, we might have to divvy it up. And so that was my complication there with, with that, in that sense. If I were to do a cursory look at all 52 people, assuming you're able to send that bundle to me and I rank them one to five by, let's say, Wednesday evening. And of course, all of us would have to do that, I think. I think that's a good approach also. So I don't want to go against my motion to do 13, but I understand Mr. Holtzman's altruistic that we all look at all 52.
Right. So what I would like to do, if it's all right with you, let me share with you an Excel spreadsheet that shows the times that you all reported to the executive office that you were available. And I think there were some questions about, some of the people said, maybe I could move some stuff. So we could certainly look at other times of the day or into the following week, again, with the understanding that this all has to be done. Can you all see my spreadsheet? Okay, so December 17th was picked because at least seven or six could attend at 10:00 AM. We had as another backup Friday at 10 o'clock, we're five. If we slip into the following week, December 21st, six were available at 10:00 AM. And then December 23rd, we had five. On the 21st, it was tentative, so we could certainly make that the day. Or what I need to hear from you all is would an evening time be better? Because people do work.
I submitted my, my schedule when asked. And so this is the schedule that I submitted and now I've scheduled in other meetings at other times that might be in conflict now. So I'd hope that we can keep it as originally scheduled when asked to submit our days of availability.
So should I?
I was just going to, I was just going to ask whether we could do a quick thumbs up or down about evenings, because evenings weren't offered.
Yeah.
And if that's a possibility, it might be better. And I'm okay with evenings.
Can I do a quick poll? Or, you know, everybody just, are you happy doing the thumbs up? Do you know how to do a mechanical thumbs up so we can clearly see it? On the bottom of your screen, there's a thumbs up?
I don't see.
I don't know my screen as it comes up.
Under reactions, where it says reactions.
Reactions.
Four, five. I just need Nelson and Jane.
Reactions.
Okay, so are you asking for the thumbs up if we're available in each?
Evenings.
No, I'm not.
Okay, so six are available, one is not. What about late afternoons? Go ahead, Commissioner Obregon.
Yes, I mean, I think that, I think, you know, we can hopefully do the work. And if all of us are there on Thursday at 10, I don't know, we could finalize it on the 10 o'clock again on the 21st. I, you know, I'm not sure of how many of us, I was looking at here, there's two of us not available on the December 17th at 10. So that'd be a good shoot for, that's six. Boy, that's a good number out of that. The other dates look more marginal when I look at the, the Excel spreadsheet, I think is what I'm looking at. So if we go with 52 or 13, if we get it done by Wednesday, tomorrow, no, today's Monday. So that gives us two days. Hopefully by the late evening, like 5 o'clock, we'll have it done on Wednesday. And then on Thursday, we convene at 10 o'clock. Or two, I'm open to, you know, because it's on a computer and, you know, I'm pretty accessible at computer, it's almost everything now. There you have it.
Other comments? Yes, Commissioner Opelalasagora.
I understand that not everyone is available on evenings. Evenings work for me if we do keep Thursday. I have one hour during my lunchtime, which I'm able to take because I transitioned to a new job. I don't, I'm, I don't have as much flexibility as I did in my previous job, so wanted to be transparent about that.
So you'd be available at 11 o'clock, you're saying, rather than 10 o'clock?
Yes.
Or would you want the meeting moved from 11 to one?
I'm available at 11. I'm looking at my calendar. I don't have anything at 11. If the meeting starts at 10, I can join at 11. Or lunchtime is fine, too. I just want to be transparent about the hour that I do have available.
If we were to move it from 11 o'clock to one, does that change the number of people who could attend on the 17th?
You know, I can, I will make myself available and see if I can rearrange some things. So because of the, the urgency of this and the importance, so I will, I will see about changing my schedule to accommodate.
For December 17th, for clarification?
I didn't hear you, I'm sorry.
Or for Monday, I'm sorry, for Thursday, December 17th at 10:00 AM?
Yes. I can reschedule to accommodate.
I hate to throw monkey wrench in this, but is, did Jean, did Commissioner Franklin, next Monday at?
next Monday at ten, are you conflicted now out of that one?
Well, again, I'm going blind on my, on my calendar, but I have the flexibility to change some things because I'm actually leading some things that I'm doing with an organization. So I have that flexibility. So because of the urgency and the importance of my commitment to this commission, then yes, I'll do that. But hopefully, next time, when we, when we're asked to submit a schedule prior to, keep in mind that when I submit my schedule and it's locked in, I don't want to really keep changing it.
Absolutely, I feel the same way. And Commissioner Opanella Segura, next Monday, would you have the same flexibility to do it at eleven o'clock, you know, one hour?
Next Monday, the twenty-first at eleven? Yes. I don't have anything.
In that event, I will move my thing, so then that would mean everybody could at least participate Monday for at least an hour as opposed to this Thursday where there is a couple of gaps. So I would propose that we go ahead and postpone the Thursday, just move it to Monday, and we'll have all a full complement for at least an hour, and seven of us for two hours.
Okay, so Daniel, do you want to make that a motion? And I guess with that, do you want to consider a starting time at eleven versus ten?
What would be better for Commissioner Opanella Segura, that she participates in the beginning of the hour, or the second part of the hour, or the two-hour block? Or maybe, Gaila, do you have a view on what would be more important?
I don't have the tabulation, you know, I don't have any other information, so it's really up to you all. And let me also just make this commitment. Once you are fully formed in January, and you have the oath of office, and you put together your bylaws, we will be establishing a calendar that will go out through the next twelve months. And I would trust that whoever will be your chair and your vice chair, which you will be selecting, will want to have a standing time for your meeting, so we can spend more time with you in person, looking at your calendars and coming up with a routine time that you want to meet.
Great. I would propose, and I would move, that we postpone the meeting from Thursday. We do not meet Thursday at ten. Instead, we meet December twenty-first, Monday. And let's keep it from ten to eleven, I'm sorry, ten to noon. Commissioner Opanella Segura then will join us at least for the last part of that. That'd be my motion.
Is there a second?
I second that.
Okay, shall I do a quick poll now? Let me, um. I need one more. Okay. So on this question, we have six, or eighty-six percent, who said, let's move it to December twenty-first, and we have one who abstained. So let's move it to December twenty-first. Now, one thing for you to keep in mind, then, then if you need a third meeting, you'll have to then decide when that will occur. The nice thing about moving it to Monday is it gives you more than seventy-two hours to post the agenda. It gives you this week and the weekend to really go through and do the analysis. If you cannot reach agreement on Monday, December twenty-first, probably then the next meeting would be that week right before New Year's. Are folks comfortable with that? Or we could end up saying, you want to do it the next day, if you feel you're close, but you need twenty-four hours of sleep on it, and it would be a special meeting. Again, with the intent of achieving the December thirty-first deadline. Yes, Commissioner Holtzman.
Um, Gaila, when you poll on the next meeting date after the one we just said for Monday, could you perhaps open it up to like five PM start time, and also weekends?
Yeah, absolutely.
Might be able to do that. Just give us some more options, please.
Yeah, absolutely. That's a, that's a great suggestion. And also, when I do polling, I like to use something called doodle, so that we can get all the possibilities and can get a quick table. So I would be happy to do that for you. Okay, so we have a date and time. We have a motion about bundling them into groups of thirteen randomly assigned that at a minimum, you would review against some criteria to be discussed and established.
And one of our, one of our participants, who's not a member, Jacqueline Dupont Walker, made a good suggestion, which is that you distribute all of the applicants to each of us, even if our assignment is a subset, so that we, those of us who have time can look beyond and get a sense of the, of the whole pool.
Right. You all have access to all fifty-two applications, including your own, on the registrar recorder website that I gave you. And there would be no restrictions on that. I mean, obviously, whichever applications you want. I'm looking for a commitment that each application's at least read by two, and you'd be given a minimum thirteen to look at.
For clarification, if we do look beyond the thirteen that we're given, do we score those as well? Or do we just look at them and evaluate them for ourselves?
I think this is a point of discussion for you as a commission. I can tell you from an academic research perspective what the answer would be, but that does not necessarily mean what you, as commissioners, might want to do.
I think we're better off with more information, which would be score as many as you're comfortable giving appropriate review of. There's a downside to that, but I think on bait, on net, it's better if more of us contribute to more, to reviewing more of the applicants.
Other comments, observations, considerations?
I tend to agree with that.
So shall we add the flexibility that you can, you will review at least thirteen randomly assigned to you, and that if you want to review more and assess them, that is obvious, obviously your prerogative to do so? I see heads raising. Okay, I'm gonna do a poll with you on that same question, just so we have it.
Mission, what is your position? There's no maybe.
Okay. So we are eighty-three percent. Five are yes, eighty, I'm sorry, five are yes and two abstain.
And what is our deadline for turning these in in order for you to be able to tabulate and prepare some displays for us for Monday?
Okay, I, I would request twenty-four hours. So if I could get them Saturday, I could prepare them on Sunday for you all, if that would help. So you would propose noon. Do you want five o'clock on Saturday? Does that give you all enough time? Okay, so, okay, so I will ask that you get your input to me by Saturday, five PM. I'll work on Sunday and compiling it to share with you at that Monday meeting on December twenty-first. So now let's discuss the criteria. There were some discussions about, should you rank your thirteen? Or should you do a criteria-based evaluation, starting with the five requirements of the election code, or possibly adding additional criteria for consideration? I was hearing a sort of a tendency going towards a criterion-based evaluation on a scale of one to five. People seem to feel the ranking was not the preferred method. And my, if that is the case, we should probably explore more, what would be the criteria you want to consider? Commissioner Maeda.
So I'm fine with a one to five on each factor, and then mechanically, you can, you know, mathematically, I should say, you can specify what the total is as opposed to trying to rank people up and down. But I would also ask that there be an additional, like, column or something where people can actually put in a comment, such as, this, you know, this person would add diversity in such, such area in, you know, something about the applicant that you want to note or emphasize. I would want to have the ability to do that subjectively, and I don't think there's any way you can have a column, or you'd have to have too many columns to say, you know, what those additional things are. So it's just some subjective, or not necessarily subjective, but an additional place to add some, some comment.
Other thoughts, input?
I think that's an excellent idea that Commissioner Maeda has, so I tend to agree with that.
Commissioner Holtzman?
I'm looking in the elections code for the five criteria you mentioned, and I don't find them. Perhaps you, or counsel, can point those out, please.
Slide thirty-four.
So across the top, there are the criteria.
So my understanding is that all of the applicants that are in the pool now meet all those criteria already, that they've been screened to meet those criteria. If you're saying that we should say who's better or worse at those, and rank those, that's fine. But I was thinking we didn't have to look anymore, because everybody's qualified.
So you may decide it's a pass/fail, or you may decide you want to look at them in terms of relative, you know, relative strength to each other on a scale of one to five.
Okay.
They all do meet a minimum threshold, but you may find some have stronger analytical skills than others, for example.
Okay, so, but I also want to add another point, that in general, as someone who's looked at election systems, what the best election systems are, point scales are problematic, because people have different thresholds for the different number of points. Better for consistency is a ranking system, where you rank the best person, the second-best person, the third-best person, so on, within each criteria.
And that would be your choice as well, if you prefer to do that method?
I mean, Commissioner Holtzman has a very good point, but the problem is if we're doing different numbers, then you can't combine the rankings. If I decide to read twenty of them, and I rank them from one to twenty, and you rank them from one to twelve, there's no way to put the ranks together. It would be nice to not have to do all four of these scales again. I think that you make a good point, that Commissioner Holtzman makes a good point, that they've met some minimum criteria. I wonder if we could rate them on something simpler, like bringing needed characteristics to the commission, one to five, where we make a subjective judgment that they are, across these four factors, strong candidates, stronger candidates, or just minimally qualified candidates.
So that ties into that segmentation approach, that you identify certain areas where you're going to be looking for the top candidates that would help to round out the group, possibly. Yes, Commissioner Priscilla Opanella Segura, and then I know Commissioner Stetcher, you're struggling with that one, so I'll come back to you, I'm sorry.
I am leaning towards a segmentation to see applicants' areas of strengths. So I would appreciate a segmentation, but open to seeing other comments.
Again, Commissioner Stetcher, I didn't mean to cut you off.
No, it's fine. I'm talking myself into a quandary, because I don't want to have to rate each person on four scales again. But a simpler way to do it sort of is eluding me. I don't know what the ranking would be. And if we went to segmentation, I'm not sure what the segments would, would be. Half of them are women, and half of them are men, and that's a pretty hard judgment to say which are the top three women, or.
Okay, Commissioner Soto.
Yes, I'd like to add, maybe to simplify the review process, since it looks like, right now, out of the eight, there's a gender imbalance. So maybe to simplify it, maybe we only look at the female candidates and just do the ranking now. Potentially, we'll just have eight female commissioners and six male commissioners, and which will be, I'm definitely okay with that, if it makes the process a little bit easier. And then from there, we can look at the other criteria, add additional ones.
So it seems what other commissions have done, if this is of any help, as you go through, you do your evaluation. I give you a summary of the top ones. Let's say we draw a line at thirty-five points or higher, some line, and then you look at that list. And then you start making determination, we need additional based on gender, based on race, ethnicity, based on political party. Those individuals then may move up higher on your list for your final six. If that makes sense.
If I may.
Yes, Commissioner Obregon.
Yeah, um, let me, let me try to put my thoughts into words. We, in that category that you were showing me, there was four categories. And three of them look like they were already met by every candidate, because they've been approved. The fourth one is where I see that we can do what you're saying, like, oh gee, we need more women, we need more this or that. In that fourth category is where I see that. The first three seem, everybody met that. Am I wrong, or is that, please help me to understand that?
So are you talking about the demographics in terms of super-sorial districts? Or are you talking about the, more of the skill criteria?
I think the skill criteria, when I was looking at that just a minute ago, three minutes ago, you guys had it up there, and the first three categories kind of were like, everybody's already met. The fourth one is the one that we're debating. I, you know, why should that person, Advocate A, be selected over Advocate B? Because I already think they're supposed to have analytical skills, they're supposed to be able to comprehend, and they're supposed to be impartial, that's given. Ah, appreciation for diverse and the geography, wow! That's somewhere where we can measure and use that as our yeah.
So one other option for you to consider, Commissioner Obregon, is that could be the only criteria you, as a group, decide to focus on? Or you could rate all the criteria, and we could weight that one much, you know, higher than the other categories. So just something for you to also consider.
Yeah, that's what I was wrestling with when I was reading this. I was going, gee, gimme, gimme, ah, here's the one that does this person fit better than that person because of that reason?
Yeah.
Basically.
Commissioner Opanella Segura, your hand was up.
Yes.
Well, I think that the applications met these skills. I did, prior to being selected, I looked at the top qualified candidates. Not every application was as detailed as others. Therefore, I think we should still consider that, because some applications were a little more vague than others.
Other thoughts? Do we have a motion? I think Commissioner Maeda, you had started one, am I correct?
Well, my, I was going off of ranking, you know, going ahead and ranking all of these four criteria, as well as having a subjective, or not a subjective, a box or a space where we can add other comments. I, I recognize that from some of the other commissioners.
I recognize that from some of the other commissioners, the view that all the applicants meet this, these criteria minimally. So we don't have to worry about whether they met them or not. I'm not sure, I'm beginning to be persuaded that I'm not sure how useful it will be to rank one to five for each of these criteria. I kind of like Commissioner Stetcher's view that it's something more like, what will this, you know, how, how well will this person contribute to the overall commission? Even though that's seems kind of subjective, but that coupled with a box where we can just say why, what we think, I guess I would prefer that. So one to five on one criterion, which is something to the effect of what will this person bring to the commission? How will this person contribute towards the, you know, what we're trying to do, the goals we're trying to accomplish?
Other comments? Was that a motion or was that just a point for discussion?
I'm happy to make it a motion if, if it draws support.
So what's being proposed is a general criteria in terms of this person would be an important addition because of some factors that they bring. And then a comment place in terms of what that additional attribution would be. And before that, a rank, I'm sorry, before that, a ranking of the four criteria, so we might be able to do some waiting later.
So I was beginning to be persuaded that that, that, that the usefulness of that is not sure how useful it is.
Okay, so we don't have a motion yet, let's discuss this some more.
Okay.
Commissioner Stetcher, I saw your hand go up.
Yeah, I think we have to do the, the rating in, in terms of these, these skills. And all I was suggesting was we sort of combined them into a general dimension to reduce the workload. And we say the extent to which this person brings analytic skills, knowledge of the law, impartiality and appreciation for diversity to the committee. So it's a kind of global rating, but it's of these four skills. And then separately, when we get the ratings, we look at how, who are the women, who lives in District Two, who are the Republicans and pick the strongest people that meet those, that fill our categorical needs. But, but I still, the rating that we were going to give was still in terms of these skills that we're all supposed to be bringing to the, the commission.
So the thought is to integrate all four, do a general rating of one to five. We then see what the rating is, we'll have a comment where comments could be added. And then we'll bring in the top candidates and you'll look at it based on the demographic and other factor. Do we have a, a motion you want to put forth or more discussion?
I'm happy to move that we, you assign us people to rate. Each person has a minimum of thirteen and they can rate others. They're rating on a five-point scale where it reflects the person's analytic skills, comprehension of the requirements, impartiality and demographic sensitivity to, to demographic diversity. But not their categories that they're the, not their, their gender or ethnicity or location, that we bring those in afterwards.
Do we have a second? Actually, may I suggest one modification? If you're going to have one criteria, could we make the rating scale one to ten?
It's fine with me.
I just think it gives more flexibility for differentiation.
Yep.
Do we have a second to the motion?
I second.
Okay, shall I do the poll again?
Yes.
I'm waiting for one more response. Okay, I will end it there. We have five who said yes, we have one abstained and I have one who did not respond. So I will, right after this meeting, I will put together a survey, I will send you out a link and I will share with all of you who's being assigned to whom randomly to look at in terms of the thirteen applications that are bundled together. Okay, so you all know who's looking at whom.
Could I, could I offer one small amendment or, which is that you labeled the ten exceptional and a one competent.
Yes.
And a five very good or a couple of points. So we all are using the scale in the same direction and we are using it somewhat similarly.
Sounds good. Any other comments, reactions? So I believe we have a methodology. Let me open this up then again. I will proceed and preparing for you the survey, I will get it out to you today with the names. And you all have the link, which I will also put together in this information packet of where you can find all the applications. We will be meeting on Monday, December twenty-first at ten AM to then look at the results. You will send me your ratings though by Saturday at five PM. So I can prepare that analysis. Okay. Moving on with our agenda, I wanted to talk about the schedule. I think we've covered that the second meeting now will be changed. It will be Monday, December twenty-first. I do want you to keep in mind that we may need a third meeting, which would then be before the new year. And maybe I should do a doodle on those dates. So I'll send you all a doodle. I'll give you times in the morning, times in the afternoon and times in the evening. And I encourage you to check everything that you could make possible. Okay, so give it a yes if you could open your calendar to make that date or time option available. So there'll be at least nine options. And I will try to turn around as quickly as I get responses from you folks. Of what is the best time just to pencil in as a potential third meeting? Any questions on that?
Don't forget weekends.
Weekends, I will add. Happy to do that. Okay. So that would be the twenty-sixth and twenty-seventh. Great. Okay. Are you willing to go as far as the twenty, the thirty-first? To me, that was cutting it close. I see Commissioner Maeda's mouth moving as December thirty, I can put December thirty-first on the list. I just think it's cutting it close because we have to write it up. I see a lot of no's. I'm not going to put December thirty-first. Okay. This gives sort of a very brief overview of the major milestones for two thousand and twenty-one. In January, you will have fourteen commissioners, you will be formally, you'll be then made formal, you will have a swearing in ceremony, you will receive an orientation. You will be given some draft bylaws to go through with independent legal counsel to then become more formal. You will appoint your own chair and vice chair. I will not be running the meetings. You'll receive Brown Act training, training on the election code. We'll be shaping that. The other thing that will need to occur is that we develop the calendar for the year in terms of when you will be meeting. There are several public hearings that are very important to keep in mind. In the spring, there will be seven public hearings with COVID nineteen. It's highly likely that those will be obviously virtual and will have to develop how that public outreach and public access will occur. And many of the people who I know are engaged in this public hearing today will have, or a public meeting will have a lot of helpful ideas on how we can reach the greatest number of people and organizations. We do not know exactly when we're going to get the US Census data. So you already heard in an earlier public comment date that the normal deadline of August fifteenth for completing redistricting has been extended to December fifteenth because of the impact COVID nineteen had on the census and the need for them to extend when it was collected. You as a commission do not start drawing maps until after the seven public hearings. Once you receive input from the public hearings, you receive the official US Census data for two thousand and twenty that's uploaded into the GIS mapping system. That is when you can begin remapping district possibilities. Once you come up with your options, there will be two more public hearings, most likely in the fall of two thousand and twenty-one because of the uncertainty about the availability of the census data. So that's the overall timeline. Any questions on it? Okay. And with that, are there, we can move on to agenda number four. There were matters not, in terms of matters not posted, commissioners, do you have any matters not posted to be placed on future agenda? Yes, Commissioner Holtzman?
Um, the technology that we'll get and whether or not we'll be able, will be provided with software where we can do things offline, if we'll be getting dedicated laptops, things like that for our work. So technology would be a good agenda item.
Okay, let me check on that. We will have training on how to do the GIS mapping, but I don't know about the technology access question. You're talking about hardware.
As well as software for us to use on our own personal equipment.
Okay. Any other matters not? Okay, be there no further. Be there no further matters not posted. We can go on to agenda number five, public comment period. Again, I want to provide this opportunity for the members of the public to address the CRC. We are limiting it to one minute because of time. This is the time when you should enter into chat if you would like to speak and the executive office staff will monitor that. And then we will follow by any individuals who are on the phone who wish to comment as well. I do also want to make it publicly known that one letter was received regarding the selection of the remaining commissioners. It's dated December fifteenth. It will be attached to the minutes. And it was provided by Julia Gomez of the ACLU. And you'll see other groups that have also signed this letter from the League of Women Voters, Asian Americans Advancing Justice, Black Census and Redistricting Hub, California Common Cause, Valley Industry and Commerce Association, Community Coalition and the Advancement Project California. So Twila, I will turn it over to you to handle the public comment process and I thank you.
Okay, thank you, Kayla. Do we have any public on the line who wish to make a final comment? Okay, I don't see, okay, I have one now, two. Okay. So first, a public comment would be Kiana. You have one minute.
So much. Thank you, commissioners, for the robust discussion today. I hope you read the letter that we submitted alongside our partners. I wanted to just highlight one point and just really emphasize that the Citizens Redistricting Commission was created to put communities in the driver's seat of the redistricting process. And to kind of remove outside influence from the redistricting process. So as commissioners, we really urge you to be mindful of this purpose and to uphold the principles of accessibility, inclusivity, transparency and independence. With that said, we would encourage the commission to consider advance notice of their meetings. I know we're on a short timeframe, but fourteen days notice and moving forward into the new year would be great. Additional options for public comment, making sure that phone participation is made available, that there's a live stream that folks can tune into. I would encourage consideration of expanding the public comment beyond one minute. It's difficult to hit all the relevant points in a single minute. And really just emphasizing the independence of your work, I would encourage a discussion about independent staffing, specifically the consultants that you all will be using in your work. And again, you have four additional months to carry out your work. So we hope you use this time to do additional trainings and work with community groups to think out some of these specific pieces. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Kiana, for your comment. Our next public comment speaker is Alexandra. You have one minute.
Hi, good morning again. It's really exciting to see all the great work that you are already doing. The first eight commissioners and as you continue to iron out how you'd like to proceed, we urge you to look at the training provided to the state commission and seek out those experts to speak to all of you once the full commission is seated. I know you will have a lot of work coming up in order to seek the full commission, but once that's been figured out, we do again encourage you to look to the training provided and the work that's been done already at the state level with their commission. And we do have organizations that can help you identify those experts on voting rights law, redistricting and best practices for independent commissions throughout the state. And that can be very helpful and we encourage you to use a fast array of organizations with that experience as a resource. We're here to support you and we're really excited to work with you.
Thank you, Alexandria. Our next public speaker is Fatima. You have one minute.
Hi, thank you again. I know this is quite an undertaking and we so appreciate your service. I echo my coalition partners' comments and I just want to encourage more access for the public to participate in these meetings. Today's meeting's allowed extremely limited amount of time for written comment to be submitted and so far it's for the most part through the Zoom platform. There should be an opportunity for written comment to be submitted during the meeting. And while it appears that you'll have a web platform and email address in place, it's important that's monitored during the CRC meetings. I encourage a live stream option to be available for those people who can't join via Zoom. Additional issues to think about are language access, access to those persons with disabilities. Due to our county's incredibly diverse voting jurisdiction, we ask that the commission be mindful that the CRC's work is accessible to many communities that live within our county. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next public speaker is Karen Diaz. You have one minute.
Hi, good afternoon, commissioners. Thank you so much for the thoughtful discussion this afternoon. I just wanted to go up my colleague Fatima's mention about the language accessibility. And as we move forward with the public hearings, also access to like language translation services. I know that a lot of my community members are really interested in the work that moves forward and, and as we do a selection that we provide the materials in other languages as well as that we have the public hearings available online with different language accessibilities and even full captions. So I just want to thank you again and look forward to working with you.
Thank you, Ms. Diaz. Are there any other public comment or public speakers who wish to give comment? Okay, I don't have any other names. Kayla, do you like to adjourn the meeting?
Um, yes, we can adjourn the meeting and I want to thank the commissioners. This time on here is wrong. It will be December twenty-first that you will be meeting. And I look forward very much to working with all of you and I appreciate your commitment for all the factors in consideration for integrity, independence, objectivity, diversity as we move forward. The meeting is, oh, Commissioner Maeda, did you?
Yes, there was the one written public comment. How will we get access to that? The letter, the letter that was provided.
My understanding, it will be attached to the minutes. Twila, do you want to talk through the process of how these information?
Yeah, actually, the, the letter should be right now posted on the agenda under public comment supporting document. But I will forward it also to the commissioners and when the minutes are written, the public comments will be there.
Thank you.
Commissioner Stetcher, you have a comment?
Yes, one other question that's probably under item four, additional things that weren't mentioned. At some point, I'd like to know what resources we have available to us. For example, can we offer simultaneous translation? For example, can we offer simultaneous translation? Or some of the other things that were mentioned in terms of community, making this hearings more accessible to the community?
Yeah, we will be looking into that, and then the next meeting might be maybe on WebEx, which may help with that. We will follow the executive office's guidance on that. Any other comments from the commissioners? I'm going to stop recording, the meeting is formally adjourned.